It's now three oh one on Tuesday, February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. I'd like to call our Public Safety Complex Work Session to order. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
Brenham.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Teresa. Weaver. Baron. Aline.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English. Newton.
Present.
We have a quarrel.
Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is the adoption of, uh, the agenda. Administrator Brown, do you have any changes?
No recommended changes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Go move, Madam Chair.
A motion and a second by Mr. Livingston for adoption of the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Aline.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Uh, thank you. Special thank you to all of my colleagues who have made time to be here this afternoon. Um, the item three is items for discussion for Richland County Public Safety Complex Status Update and Next Steps. As a reminder, uh, during work sessions, we do not take any action. This is a time for us to, uh, receive information, discuss, and plan next steps as it stated on the agenda. Administrator Brown, you recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Members of Council, uh, there have been certainly a lot of, uh, employees and, and folks working with this particular, uh, activity. Uh, but we want to have, uh, to walk us through this work session. I'm gonna actually recognize ACA Thomas, who will continue to walk us through this process. But, uh, just wanna let you know that there, there are many hands, uh, and so I wanna acknowledge those many hands. But for the purpose of this discussion, uh, we're gonna have ACA Thomas, uh, walk us through this work session document. Uh, and with that being said, uh, ACA Thomas, if you'll head to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Madam Chair.
Recognize.
Thank you very much. I wanna thank everyone for being here today and, um, for, for, it just won't be me today. And we plan not to take two hours of your time. Um, but to talk about this today, there will be also some information that you will hear from, um, Deputy Chief Rafael Gonzalez and/or, um, Major Don Curtis, who have been, uh, working with us on this as well today. In, in the audience, we do have Director Michael Byrd, uh, who is our Director of Emergency Services. Um, this process, um, has been one that we will talk about. And if you'll go to the next slide, please, we'll sort of walk through the agenda. So first, we're gonna, in tree Richland County Forum, we've got a roadmap. Um, so we will walk you through the Public Safety Complex roadmap. Uh, we will talk discussion items. Uh, we will talk requested decisions, and some of these are changing daily. Um, since this was produced on Friday, um, we, we will be changing, uh, some items up here because we are getting more information given to us. Uh, we will review the communications networks alternatives, which also has changed since Friday. We'll talk about historical revenues and expended funding changes, expected funding changes. And then we'll talk about what the next five years looks like from an operating budgets perspective and our, then our next steps, if, if everyone is okay with that. If there's no questions. If I can go to the next slide, please? So before you, you see the Public Safety Center roadmap. Um, so the orange items are items, um, where you have, we've already taken some actions and moved forward with or either that we're working through. Uh, if you recall back in two thousand twenty one, shortly after I arrived here and many of you arrived here, uh, we were actually authorized to construct, uh, a nine-one-one center, uh, for, to be called the Public Safety, Public Services, Public Safety Center, uh, at the Columbia Place Mall. This is in the former Burlington Coat Factory location. Um, through that process, you also issued us in the next box authorization to issue a bond for construction to pay for this complex. Um, we also then went out and issued, um, a request for, uh, architectural design. LS three P through the procurement process was selected to do that, and we worked through that process with them with many renovations and many renditions having to be made because of the construction of the building. Uh, following that in the blue there, you'll see that we actually then issued a, uh, RFP for a construction manager at risk. Uh, MB Con was selected for this project, uh, and they, we went under contract with them in two thousand twenty-two. In two thousand twenty-three, construction actually began, uh, and we are now at a point where we can fairly certainly say that we plan on being complete with this construction by June the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. The next orange box, you'll see we are currently, um, working with operational agreement negotiations with other intergovernmental partners uh, to determine how the structure and the place and the, and the operations of the center will take place. Uh, we're also working with communications equipment platform selection. This is one where we had thought that we would need to, um, ask for council's input to make a decision on which platform would be selected. However, one of the, one of the providers for this service, which is our current provider, has, uh, determined that they would no longer operate in South Carolina. We were the last, uh, operating partner here in the state. Uh, so once their prep platform with us is, or our agreements with them are expired, they will no longer, um, support this service. We have found an interim selection, though, and we'll explain that to you as well. Uh, the next one, council to approve the operational structure for the nine-one-one center. That's when we believe that we'll be able to come back to you and give you a good idea of, of what our structure would be after working with our, uh, other, um, organizational partners, um, and determining who will be, uh, actually involved with this process. Council will then operate, authorize us to, um, to operate, for the operating agreements with intergovernmental partners. We hope to have that to you by May the first. Our goal with this is, as you know, all local governments in our area have a June thirty fiscal, uh, year end. So by the time the new fiscal year, uh, begins and during the budget processes, we'd like to be able to, uh, have made accommodations for that. Again, construction will be completed at the facility by June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, barring no unforeseen circumstances. Uh, communication equipment following that time will be, will begin to be, um, installed and tested. This will be an arduous process. Uh, we've allowed up to six months for that, with a hopeful operation date of the new complex of January first, two thousand twenty-six. And I'm happy to, um, entertain any questions about the roadmap.
Any questions from the body regarding any of the timeframes presented or information presented? Recognize this bear.
I don't know if this is an appropriate question for right now, but you, you've mentioned a lot of progress and some snags along the way, um, of making some minor adjustments. Do we feel, it, it appears that we do feel like we're still on schedule for the building, um, to be completed. Are we, how are we looking as it relates to the budget?
Uh, again, we are now in the budget process, and we are working with other organizations to de- develop what the budget will look like. We have a good idea now of what all of the costs that will be incurred to operate the new center are. Uh, and so I feel that we will be able to present a budget to you with the coming year.
So, and, and that's an operation budget, but as far as construction and, and the project, that's what I'm concerned about.
I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood there.
No problem.
The construction budget i- is, is well within tolerances. We are, we are in a good situation there. We are very close to being complete with construction. Now we start to, to, uh, putting in the equipment, which is also planned for.
And, and the equipment is planned for as a part of that budget? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're only, at this point, we're ready to, to nego- negotiate or to, to crunch numbers for solely just operation costs?
Yes, ma'am.
People and day to day.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other questions? Next slide, please. With that, if, uh, if it pleases the chair and the body, I'd like to turn it over to, um, Major Don Curtis, who will be able to talk about, uh, some of the things that have been under consideration for operations, for our operating platform, and some of the most recent updates, uh, to that process in the last week.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So in discussions with, um, the state revenue, uh, fiscal offices, we used to get an eighty percent reimbursement for any related equipment for a nine-one-one call. Uh, they have since changed that structure of reimbursements, so we no longer receive the eighty percent reimbursement. They have estimated that now we will get anywhere from one point two to one point three million dollars a year for reimbursement. Um, so from that money, we have to understand that we have secondary PSAPs in the county, USC PD and Forest Acres PD. They are also allowed to pull from that money to support their secondary PSAPs.
I'm sorry, sir. I just, can you tell me what a PSAP is?
It's a public safety answering point.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay.
So with, so with a public safety answering point, Richland County holds that primary PSAP. Any other agencies within Richland County would be considered a secondary PSAP. We currently have USC PD and Forest Acres as a secondary PSAP. We do support their nine-one-one phone structure, um, and that money comes from our budget as well. I think we'll have some discussions on that at a later date. Um, I think me and Lori are gonna work on something to present to you guys and see how we wanna proceed with that. Um, we also, and receive about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars every quarter for wireless calls. And that's an estimate of about one point fi- one point five billion a year. Um, that can change based on the wireless calls that we receive. That fee used to be sixty-two cents per phone line. They have since raised that fee to sixty-five cents. So we will see a, possibly an increase based on how many wireless calls we receive. The current reimbursement program is being run by the Emergency Management Division under the direction of Michael Byrd. One of the changes that they also made with reimbursements is we will no longer receive a reimbursement for our EZNet system, which is Entrada, which is our emergency services IP network, which routes the nine-one-one calls out of the nine-one-one center. Um, a lot of this, uh, has changed since I've created this document. We currently use Entrada, who we contract with Motorola to provide that service. Entrada currently today services Lancaster and Richland County. Lancaster is in the process of coming off of Entrada, which would leave us as the sole user of that system. So like Lori said earlier, Entrada has opted to not support our center when we go to the new nine-one-one center. Our current contract with them expires in March of this year. They are working on creating a new contract to at least get us from March to the first of January of next year. Um, we don't know what that contract's gonna look like, but currently we're paying them about six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars a year for that contract. So I don't know if there's gonna be an increase. At one point, they did tell us that they were gonna support our new center, and it was gonna go up over a million dollars a year. Um, and I think really they were raising those prices to get us to come off of that system. So the state fiscal services offices have created a state EZNet system, which they are willing to provide for us free of service. They will provide all the networking gear and the connections for the nine-one-one center. But what we're asking for today is the direction of council. Do they want us to move forward with that state EZNet system? Or do they want us to look for other vendors to provide that service?
If, if you could stop just one minute right there, I just wanna pause. I have a question, but then also wanna, uh, give folks an opportunity to answer questions and also just reiterate it's a work session, so they're asking, but we are not taking action today, okay? Um, my question is related, uh, I guess going back to funding. When you mentioned that, uh, the state decided they'll, they no longer, uh, will give the eighty percent reimbursement. Instead, there is this approximate dollar amount. Do you, I guess, can you explain, is the dollar amount now that we will be receiving, is it less than what we would have been receiving if we got the eighty percent?
Oh, it's significantly less.
How much?
Well, that's hard to determine because it's based on the equipment and the services that you purchased in a year. So let's say we purchased one point six million dollars of furniture, we would get eighty percent of that back, which would put us roughly at two hundred, right at three hundred thousand dollars to pay for that furniture. We would get that remaining money back from that service. So as you can see, if we spend one point six million dollars, we get seven hundred back. We've only got three hundred left that we can pull from. Whereas in the past, if we spent another one point six million, we would have gotten another seven hundred thousand back. So now it's just a strict one point two to one point three million a year.
And is it some formula that they're using to come up? Or is this, like, would next year, could it go up based on a formula, or is that kind of the set amount?
Yes, ma'am. It can go up based on their formula. So what they do is they base it on the number of console positions you have in your nine-one-one center. We are the second largest in the state. We will be the second largest in the state when we move into the new nine-one-one center, um, and it's based on call volume as well.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Ms. English, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. Just wanted to, I guess, more clarification on Entrada versus the EZNet systems. Um, you were saying Entrada really doesn't want us anymore.
Yes, ma'am.
But the EZNet would be free. Is that like a trade-off for what they're doing? And how secure are you with that EZNet system?
Uh, so there are currently forty-six counties that are on the state EZNet system. Um, we have not reached out to any of those to find out what issues they may have with that system. Um, our only concern is the size of our agency is going to be, um, much larger than what they're doing today. Most of the forty-six counties that they have on today have anywhere from fifteen consoles or less. We're gonna have forty-seven in this new nine-one-one center. So that is one of our concerns, is are they going to be able to support a center of our size? Um, but they are assuring me that they will be able to support our center.
If I may, ma'am.
Recognize, yes, ma'am.
Do you have another vendor that you guys are seeking out, or you're just in that process now, just looking now?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we're just looking right now. Uh, one of the, uh, options we were gonna look at was Comtech. However, that is the vendor that the state is using. So it just really doesn't make sense for us to reach out to Comtech to see what, we would have to pay them to provide that service when we can get it from Comtech, from the state for free. Uh, there are others out there that we can look at. We just don't know what that cost is gonna be from those other providers. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I ship you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanna take a step back real quick. Can you help me understand a portion of the part where you said that, uh, that, uh, Forest Acres, University of South Carolina and Columbia can also use these funds?
So the, so when you look at that, the Columbia-Richland PSAP is our PSAP. We hold that main PSAP. That's under the direction of Michael Byrd today. USC PD and Forest Acres, they hold a secondary PSAP, which, so whenever a call is routed, it routes from our PSAP to their PSAPs for them to answer their nine-one-one calls. So we're not receiving their nine-one-one calls from landlines. However, from a cellular device, we could possibly still be receiving nine-one-one calls for service to Forest Acres PD and USC PD.
Um, Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
So, so just briefly, and I know we talked earlier about this is just a work session, nothing is being asked for council. At the time that this discussion was happening, early on, there was a potential ask as it relates to, do we stay on what the county is currently using, or do we move to what the state is allowing for? One is a paid service, if you will, and one is free. The paid service is, would be, have been a significant cost to the county. Uh, there is certainly a question about whether or not, as, uh, the major said, um, would the service be the same? We, we cannot speak to that. We don't have the ability to address that. So that is something that will be new for our team to, to feel, to figure out. But what we basically, the situation is happening is, we are being forced to make a significant decision, uh, with a major component of our service that we're providing. But the alternative to that is how much more money you would want to spend, um, potentially. So we, we feel at this point, at least I do as the county administrator, that the move is gonna be to the state system because without it, you are then taking on a whole another component, um, far above and beyond what we would be able to budget for consistently without continued concerns. So again, no, not asking for any decisions, but I wanted you to know that the reason why the conversation existed was because the, the original ask between the two was a significant ask. So we can consider other options. But again, none of those options right now, um, do we have any necessary specific confidence in based off of what we have been using in the past versus what's being presented to us now by the state? So it's basically either this or you pay. Uh, and that's really what it's come down to. So don't wanna put, eh, words in anybody's mouth, but I think that's what we need to communicate to you is that you either follow the state's program, or you have a financial contribution that you're gonna have to make, um, that is gonna be much more significant, um, than you were looking at prior to any time before. So again, a lot of information, I apologize, but I want to clear that up while the ask was originally there. But we're, we're not making the ask, I believe the financial decision is kind of in our face. Um, and I would not recommend making a different decision if we were talking about recommendations today.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. Yes, uh, Councilwoman Brenham, and then English, is that correct? Okay.
Thank you, yeah. I'd, I guess despite the, the change in the state's reimbursement program, it looks like a couple somewhat silver linings or positive notes here in that with the increase on the, uh, charge per wireless call, it looks like if I did the math right, might be another seventy-two thousand a year.
Based on the call volume, yes.
Yeah. And, um, the savings, potentially from dropping Motorola Entrada, those two numbers together, seven hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in savings a year if we route. So that's a good thing, potentially.
Thank you. Councilwoman English.
Question is for, um, Director Byrd. I know you and I have had some, you've been at some of my meetings before. You don't have to answer now if you don't want to. But, um, based on some of the community things that have come out, how, um, how are you feeling about this? And like I said, you don't have to answer now, but I'd love to get your input on this.
Thank you, Ms. English. Um, now I believe this is something we, we need to do is it, before, uh, this issue came up, the state, uh, gets a pool of money from the, the cellular phones that are used, that, that fee. And it goes, uh, into a pot of money, and each county, uh, competes kind of a- against each other based on the, as, uh, Don said, based on the number of cellular calls that come into the nine-one-one center. So we actually have to keep track of that number. What they, what they've done, uh, is they've taken the money that they would normally give us in reimbursements, and they're using that money to, uh, stand up this statewide system. There are several counties in the, in the Low Country that, um, uh, right now, I don't, I don't know if they're gonna go with the statewide system or not, so I don't know what they're gonna do. But, uh, financially, I think, and operationally, as we move forward, this is probably what we need to do, is move to the state system. Um, so it, it will help us, uh, in the long term financially and in the short term financially as we, as we move forward with the operational budgets. Going forward, yes, ma'am.
All right, sir, I think we're good to pick back up to whatever you had next.
All right, that's pretty much it for the presentation. Um, so, um, we will pre- we will be presenting a letter of acceptance from the state EZNet system, uh, around March fourth. Um, I'm gonna get a copy of that letter to Lori. She will present it to you guys. It will need a signature on it before we can proceed. It will take eight to twelve months to uplift that system. So based on when we get that signed and get it back, that could potentially delay the opening of the center. Um, if I'm ready for any other questions, if anybody has any other questions of me, I'd be willing to answer.
I think we're good for right now, just stick around.
All right, great, thank you.
ACA Thomas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as we say, this is information that is evolving. Literally today, as I walked into the chamber, we were, we were told that we would have to sign, you know, we would have to try to, to get to council for consideration, uh, giving someone the authority to accept this change. Uh, that's something that we would expect to come on, uh, next week's agenda. So, um, please be looking for that. What I wanna talk about now a little bit are the revenues and the expenditures, which, you know, this is my stuff. Um, the first chart that you're going to see there, um, shows you the historical revenue of the fund. What I wanna point out is that you do see a large, in, a large fluctuation in state appropriations. And this is what, where those nine-one-one reimbursements actually fall. So there are some years that you may receive more than others because you expended more than you did in others. Um, the nine-one-one tariffs, um, those are actually landlines. And if you notice there, they are waning significantly. We did have an uptick in two thousand twenty-two, then it went back down in two thousand twenty-three. It continued to go back down in two thousand twenty-four. And I will tell you that if many people are like me, I, I don't have a landline anymore. So that's another piece of this formula that, that is fluctuating dramatically. Uh, also in the state appropriations is the tariffs from the cell phones. Again, as, uh, Don indicated, there's about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a quarter that comes into that. And yes, the, the reimbursement for that has been increased to sixty-five cents per line. However, when you look at the number of calls that come in and where they may generate from, um, I know if you're like me, I get many cellphone calls that actually have a prefix that is not an eight oh three, or an eight four three, or an eight six four. Um, many times with those, they're actually being routed back to wherever that carrier is and has to work its way back to our centers. The other thing with that is until it's changed, uh, we don't get any revenue from those calls. So, um, that too is another factor that is tremendously impacting our, uh, funding for our nine-one-one system. Now, the one thing that this does do, and the one thing that we currently, um, allow it or look at in our budget is the fact that this does dispatch for fire as well. Uh, and we do use some fire funds to actually balance our budget. Um, so this is just- Um, so this is just giving you an idea of what our historical revenues are from the county's perspective. And I don't have any future revenues because right now there are quite a few things at play, uh, not the least of which is how we stand up the operations and what we come back recommending for a budget. And I'll take any call, any questions you may have.
Used to be none, A.C.
I'll move to the next slide, please. The next slide, I hope you've got your printed copy of, uh, well, not this one, but the next one. Um, this is actually an expenditures estimate for the next uh six years. I was trying to give the current 2025 uh expenditures as to where we are now versus what I believe 26 through 31 will look like at the new center. You'll notice I have two lines there. If you can go back to slide 23, please, thank you. The grand total line there is the, is the cost of operations estimated if we are not including Entrada. Because keep in mind that at the time this was done, we were looking at two options, whether we would be going EZNet. So your EZNet total with the state is the top yellow line. The bottom yellow line is what the, the total for that would be if we were just to have gone to another vendor. So whether it be Entrada or anyone else, those might be realistic numbers as to what it would look to add a different carrier. And at this point in time, I think you've heard where um our emergency services director and the administrator feels that might be headed. So you would be looking at in excess of a million dollars a year added own to the expenditure to stand up that platform and to monitor it. Madam Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Newton.
I'm gonna try to ask this question well. So looking at the grand total line that you have, is that the grand total that you had originally estimated before all of the Entrada things happened? Or is this an updated number solely presuming we were using the free EZNet from the state?
The top line uh um assumes we are using EZNet from the state that's free, the top yellow line. The bottom yellow line was assuming that we were to be able to maintain our, our relationship with Entrada. And the middle line there uh that says add Entrada, that's about what that annual cost is.
Again, just, just making sure because we've been doing estimates on things before this ever happened. So this is essentially a new, the grand total up top is a new estimate based on the current reality representing the savings that would have been our previous estimate that would have presumed we were using Entrada or something like it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Sorry. You can, your question confused me. I thought I knew what was going on, then I got confused.
No, you did. You, you're good. You're, I'm sure you're still good.
All right, all right.
If we can go to the next slide, please. I hope you have your paper with you because I realize these numbers are, are, are small. But what I wanted you to see with this largely is the fact that it's not just Entrada and it's not just staff. There are a huge number of items that go into operating this 911 center. Um, we've, and we believe that we have captured all of them here. Uh, we've looked at training, we've looked at networking, we've been, we've worked with IT, we have worked with GIS, uh, we have worked with all of the budgets and the, the historical data that we had to come up with a good number, as well as considering what it will cost us annually to operate the new facility from a building operations. Uh, we're estimating in year one about $900,000 for that. Keep in mind that we're bringing on a 55-plus thousand square foot building, operating seven days a week, 365 days a year. Uh, there will be utilities, there will be maintenance contracts, there will be cleaning. Um, so, so that's a, an expensive proposition. We want to make sure as we move forward with our budgets for our new facilities that we incorporate all of these things. And then rather than giving you what one year looks like, we're trying to look at a five-year projection for what this would be. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about those.
Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
And so thank you for providing the timeline. Do the increasing operating costs just represent that everything costs more over time? And so it's a presumed rate of inflation, so to speak?
Each one has a different component. For instance, um, your, if you look at staffing, for instance, there's a yellow line there that has uh numbers in it. That's where your headcount increases over time to get us to a fully operational staff. Uh, with topping out in 2031 at 110 um staff members in that facility. Uh, so there's increased cost for each new staff line as well as, of course, sustaining our um compensation study as well and, and the annual increases in that. So those have different components there. Your operating costs, we've looked at on many of those, for instance, uh, just an average increase in cost of what we've seen on most of your network and, and uh radio equipment. We're seeing a minimum of about 5% a year, so uh those are increased at about 5% a year.
And do these costs, understanding that things change, fairly track to what was anticipated when we first started um this project? Or do they differ in any significant way?
To be fair, based on my first numbers, they came down a little bit. Thank you. Any questions?
Um, we have started in 2026 at um staffing headcount at 85. What are we at right now?
Um, as of two weeks ago, there were at 78, 78. With, that's made into the 78. So six of those are part-time workers, so 72 with six part-time.
But your, your staffing number in this spreadsheet accounts for part-time, is that correct?
It does.
Okay. And the facility mats can hold, do we know how many employees?
110, I believe. But now keep in mind, you're working, I think, 47 stations over four shifts, over three shifts. We believe that at 110, you would, you would be operating at, at your, your, your best capacity. Four shifts, sorry, four shifts.
Um, okay.
Not everybody works the same days.
Yes, yes, I hear you. Thank you, appreciate it. Um, can you talk to me about what the advertising line item is?
Um, well, there are ads where you have to recruit for staff. There are also advertisements that in these um types of situations, they may place uh in periodicals and such that, that are um associations for the organization.
Recognize, I'm sorry. You recognize, I should be.
A.C.A. Thomas, Thomas, can you, uh, what about uh memberships and dues?
There are a lot of associations that you have to be a part of to keep your certifications to be in the, to, to be certified to do this line of work. Uh, so the, the idea there is in you're, you're investing in employee development to ensure that they are kept up on the latest technology and the latest um uh skills to be able to do their jobs.
So. They shouldn't know about, Ms. English, did you have something? You sure? Go ahead, Councilman Branham.
Thank you. Uh, I, the, the third row of numbers that's got a blank label under staff estimates, is that overtime?
No, sir, that's the, that's the cost for the additional staff. The, in other words, the difference between 85 and 92 in year 26 and 27, that's what that cost is.
Okay, thanks.
And based on the total number for 2026 of operations, what is the percent of increase of operation cost from where we are now?
It will be only about 2%, 2 to 3%. And a lot of that has to do with the staffing numbers. And the fact that we won't be operational there for a full year. I would point out one thing, though, is that, let me retract what I just said. Um, it's actually closer to about 5%. And the reason for that is that we will this year, because we don't, not on the EZNet and our agreement with Entrada will expire, we will have to pay that gap cost. We're estimating that at a million 30 because that's what they had originally quoted us for the new contract. So it could be less than that, it could be a little bit more, but as we get through this, um, we will be able to let you know more.
Ms. Terazia, you're welcome.
And just uh to be clear, I might've missed this. How long is that gap? So what does that represent between?
We are hopeful that if we're able to move forward with an agreement, they've said eight to 12 months, we would like to believe that we would be able to have it online by January of 2026 so that we, because that is crucial to us moving into the facility. But not to say that things won't be happening in the facility once this is complete because there, there's, there are lots of things other than just that that have to be installed and tested.
Any further questions related to operations um and projections? Councilman Branham?
So just as to revenue, the 911 tariffs are dropping significantly. Talked about the wireless charges. Are there other potential sources of revenue?
We're exploring those, but keep in mind that from a state perspective, these are the mechanisms that you fund your um 911 center. Unfortunately, the landlines are diminishing or are declining. Um, and with many of your wireless call, callers, and we were, we were talking about this today, maybe we need a campaign of some sort. Um, until those numbers change and people establish themselves as residents in South Carolina, um, until they make that 911 call and find that they're delayed, they may not realize what they're doing by not changing that.
Ms. English, you're recognized.
Just one comment from the onset of this, what my big concerns was operational costs, but it's not nearly as significant as I thought it would be. It's a lot less than I thought it would be from the onset. So that's, that's good.
All right, A.C.A. Thomas, I think you can go to the next slide.
All right, thank you. So the next steps, um, we don't need your guidance on the uh communications platform. However, what we will be bringing to you is um an agreement, uh, hopefully next week uh that we will ask under the administrator's nomination, requesting that he be authorized to execute that agreement so that we can commit to go to the EZNet with the state of South Carolina if, if that is council's choice. Um, and then we'll keep you updated as we work to negotiate with our partner agencies uh to determine how we will be operating um in full once we move to the new center.
And further questions? Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
No question, Madam Chair, but I did want to just take a moment to acknowledge uh there have been a number of, of members and certainly a request as well that I received from Chair Mackey for uh members to have an opportunity uh to visit the public safety complex. Uh, you are certainly welcome. We will need to uh schedule that. You will see something coming from me. Uh, and when we come out, uh, we do have to have on safety gear because it is an active construction site. Uh, and so what we will do is you will receive that from me the day that I provide. Just please let me know which one to work for you. Uh, we can get you scheduled to come out. Uh, and then you also receive a, a separate email very similar to that. Um, I know the other council members are aware of this, but um you will receive one for the public safety complex and you, you will also receive one for the detention center. I know many of you have already been out there, but it's the annual thing that we do. Uh, and so you will receive those two letters here um before the end of February with several opportunities for March. Uh, so just be looking out for those and they will come from me. Uh, so we'd love to have you, uh, and we'll prepare to receive you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Administrator Brown. If I uh don't see any uh further questions, comments, we are now at item four. Motion, second for adjournment, Madam Clark.
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terazia?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Ending adjourn, thank you.